To order at six thirty-five.
Call the Union twenty-six to order at six thirty-five.
Okay, and so our first order of business is to consider entering into executive session. So I will move to enter executive session pursuant to GLC thirty A, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel. Superintendent Contract, Dr. E. C. Amara-Herman, with the intent to return to open session. For the review.
Second.
All right. So I think we did roll call, right? Yesterday. Bridgette?
Yes, yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
I think so.
Jennifer?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Tillman, a board.
And Sarah Vess, yes.
Did we take it? You called them to order, did we all say we were here?
We don't have to, because we're all in person.
Okay, good.
All right, so the region is now executive session.
It's got a small brick, and then it's got a big.
We have the Union twenty-six.
All right, consider entering executive session pursuant to GLC thirty-eight, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions. Or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Superintendent's Contract, Dr. Amara-Herman, with the intent to return to open session.
Second.
I'll talk to you later.
All those in favor? Bridgette?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Erv? Yes. Sarah? Vess?
Yes.
We are now authorized to go into executive session.
We'll be back.
Won't be long.
That is an excellent question. Sarah Vess?
Going to skip that item. And so our, uh, I think next item is you, Earth.
Chair's update.
Just me?
Adjourn the Union 26.
I thought we did it there.
No, I was just.
Alright, so, uh, make a motion to adjourn Union 26.
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Raise our hands. We're gonna raise our hands on this one.
I'm not Union 26.
Thank you.
Alright.
We're adjourned.
Perfect. Okay, so my chair's update, I, I just wanted to say thank you for our, everybody that has put so much time and effort and energy into our superintendent search and all of the research that was done and like, just, it's so much, it is a big ask and a very heavy lift and I am just very, very appreciative of everyone and all their hard work and our great candidates that came and visited with us, it was lovely to meet all of them. So, any school committee announcements? Come in.
Uh, just so it's in the record, Levert approved the six percent budget increase at town meeting last Saturday.
Yay. Any other school committee announcements?
I was going to just, oh, I was gonna give an update, or we can do it at the next meeting, but I was gonna give an update on the Title IX Investigation Subcommittee, brief update.
Is it more than like, how about a quick version and then we'll add it to next week's?
We'll do it to the next one.
Oh, okay. Anna?
Can I just say that it is, um, the Chutesbury Elementary School PTO Silent Auction fundraiser on May 3rd from four to eight at the Chutesbury Athletic Club and we'd love for everybody to come out and support them.
Excellent.
I was gonna quickly say it's, it's the Pride March at Northampton and I believe Wildwood Elementary has set up a time for everyone to meet, uh, at ten AM. The march starts at eleven AM at the park in Northampton, you could look at Doug's, um, newsletter that he sent out last week.
Yep.
So hopefully, the community will come out and support Amherst in marching in the parade.
On Saturday.
On Saturday. The parade starts at eleven.
Great. These are.
At Sheldon Park.
These are excellent announcements. Are there any other really fun school committee announcements that we'd like to have? I can report that the, uh, girls varsity lacrosse team won their game sixteen to two.
Wow.
Tonight. So, good job, girls blacks.
And apparently they're the only team that's undefeated.
What's not talk about that?
Oh, no.
Hush.
Okay, nevermind. I never said the right thing.
Uh, do we have warrants to report on?
My computer is, um.
Is not ready yet?
Yeah, it's having issues.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um.
It won't let me log in.
Oh, no.
After I came back.
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like we'll go on and then if it comes back, we can circle around, is that alright with everyone? Perfect. Uh, it looks like we do not have any, uh, gifts to accept, uh, so our next agenda is public comment, I did not receive any written or, uh, voicemails, so if there was anyone from the public that would like to make public comment, okay. Uh, next up is, oh my, uh, approval of minutes.
Start with the tenth.
Do you wanna take them in order, or?
Yeah, start with the tenth.
Oh, I see.
I, I will say I only read one of these minutes because when I looked at it last, there was only one that was attached.
Me too.
Um, so.
They're pretty short, um.
Okay.
Can we move to approve all of them and then have discussion about these things?
Oh, look that, okay.
Can we, can we do one motion?
That's a good.
Accept all of them, or not?
And then discuss amendments?
And then discuss them all?
Yeah, I think many of them don't need to.
I, I think we have to do them as individual, but.
But the motion says one sentence.
Oh. It does. Alright, I guess I don't really have very big feelings if.
I, I, I feel like it's the, the practice of some on the committee to abstain if they were absent and there is at least one meeting where some members were absent, um, so that might be a reason to pull that one out. Um, just a thought, I, I, I don't, I don't think you need to, uh, abstain if you were absent, but that seems to be our practice. And, yeah, so.
I move to approve the minutes from April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
I noticed, uh, just a really small thing, but, um, for the, the minute meetings where it's discussing Union 26, it just has region for me and I'm also on unit, Union 26.
On, on the tenth?
In the attendance?
Yeah.
Deb?
So, um, I spell my name differently, D E B O R A H, just thought I'd, at some point, correct it and now seems as good a time as any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further amendments for the tenth? Okay. Uh, all those in favor of approving April tenth for the region as amended? Four, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, perfect, thank you.
Union 26 is adjourned.
Oh, good call, thank you.
I move to approve the minutes of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Discussion?
Same as before.
Wait, are we, point of order, maybe? Does, does Union 26 also have to approve all its minutes?
They're adjourned.
Hmm?
We adjourned.
We adjourned.
They're adjourned.
Oh, right. Next time.
Yep.
Should've thought of it. Alright.
Alright. So, the same, same amendment change, spelling of your name?
Sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor of? Perfect, thank you all.
I move to approve the minutes from April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Same amendments.
Thank you.
So, so this one's a case where I believe Deb is listed at Union 26, but it should be Bridget.
Right. Oh, yeah, look at that, okay. Thank you.
No wonder she tried to vote.
I'd stepped on my other glasses.
Alright, all in favor of approving the April twenty-third minutes as amended? Excellent, ripping through them.
I move to approve the minutes from April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Was that Jennifer again?
Nope.
No.
Oh, we snuck right in there.
I almost.
Alright.
Same amendments as the last one.
Oh, actually, this one doesn't have any attendance.
Right.
So, attendance could be added.
I'm looking at the wrong ones, uh.
Any other amendments? All in favor of approving the April twenty-fourth minutes as amended?
I move to approve the April twenty-five, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Second.
I have a correction to make. Um. Uh, item B, the title of that paragraph, uh, C O Mara has no E, it should be M A R A.
And the, the name in Union 26 thing, I'm not on Union 26, and, yeah, thank you.
And Sarabes's name needs an H.
That's dumb. Keeping us on our toes.
Uh, all those in favor of approving the April twenty-fifth minutes as amended?
I move to approve the April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Second.
Discussion amendments?
Well, the same two.
Yeah. I, I got those two.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Any further amendments? All those in favor of approving the April twenty-ninth minutes as approved, as amended? Alright. Okay. Back to the warrants?
Yes.
Great.
So, um, on four, ten, twenty-four, I, William Sher, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of five hundred thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents, includes general fund expenses of four hundred and thirty thousand, five eighty-three and one cent, revolving fund expenses of fourteen thousand, six hundred fifty-seven and ninety-eight cents, grant fund expenses of fifty-four thousand, fifteen dollars and fifteen, fifty-six cents, gifts of fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, um, tailings of four hundred and thirty-three dollars and capital of eight ninety-two. I, William Sher, authorized by my signature in the amount of, uh, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and seven ninety-nine cents dated on four seventeen, twenty twenty-four. And that was for payroll, sorry. On four seventeen, twenty twenty-four, I, William Sher, authorized by my signature in payables in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents, it includes general fund expenses of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and nine and thirty cents, revolving fund expenses of zero dollars, sorry, and tailings of one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and ten cents. On four twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, I, William Sher, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine and twenty-six cents, includes general fund expenses of four hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, revolving fund expenses of nineteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-four and twelve cents, grant fund expenses of seven thousand, nine hundred, seven, sorry, that one's, seven thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and six cents, uh, tailings of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents, capital of eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents.
Excuse me, are you saying tailings? And what is that?
It says tailings.
Tailings? Thanks. T A I.
T A I, T A I L I N G.
Okay.
Yes, tailings, so, uh, when we have things, um, that sort of don't fit another category, so, we get a credit that like crosses fiscal year and we can't apply it where it needs to be, um, that type of thing, those become tailings, uh, someone reimburses us, so like we return something, we get credit, uh, they occasionally actually give us a check, uh, those fall in the category of tailing, so periodically, we will spend the tailings down because they build up over time, um, but they don't have a true, you know, truly appropriation, they're not truly a grant or a gift.
And they don't go back to the account?
No, if the fiscal year closes, then they don't.
Or the budget. Right. But if it had been for office supplies, it isn't reserved for future use for office supplies.
Within the fiscal year, yes, but if we close a fiscal year and, and start the next one, we might get a, you know, a refund that sort of crosses years, we can't apply it to a previous year that's closed, so that's what happens.
I, William Sher, authorized by my signature in the amount of, this is for payroll, these are, like, presented differently, so I get tongue tied, sorry. For eight hundred thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-seven cents dated five, one, twenty twenty-four, that was the last one.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so on to our new and continuing business. Do you want to start with the presentation?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do a little, excuse me, I wanna pull another chair up here, so, uh, we have visitors tonight, um, so the, the folks that, that are our designers for our track and field project, uh, are here tonight, um, not the entirety of the team, but a couple of folks, the principal guys, uh, Kevin and Mark, um, I'll let them introduce themselves, they have a slide with the pictures and the whole deal, so let them do that.
We can skip that one.
But, but nonetheless, they're gonna kind of walk you through where they are at this point, uh, primarily, we're gonna talk about, you know, sort of revisiting the, the cost approximations, uh, of the different, you know, designs that have been kind of in front of us over the last little while, there's some variations on that that they'll do, I think a couple of things to keep in mind as they go through this, um, it's really three major sort of decisions, um. Orientation, whether it's where it is now or north-south, field surface, natural surface, artificial surface, and whether the track itself is gonna remain sort of a six-lane track or be a bigger, uh, eight-lane track, now, they'll take it through the options and, and they're trying to parallel a little bit of what you've seen in previous stuff that Weston and Sampson did, so, um, those three primary categories are things that are gonna be sort of in and out of a lot of the different things they're gonna discuss with, with us tonight, but, but. But if you think about those broad categories of decisions that are part of the design, and then they're sort of clustered into options that parallel what Weston and Sampson did with some wrinkles on that. And so I'll let these guys sort of take it away, introduce yourselves, tell them a little about, you know, SLR and all that good stuff, and walk them through the slide deck, just tell me when you need to go to the next slide. And then I've got a little tiny thing at the end about where our funding sits and what constraints there are on that that I'll share with you guys as well. But we'll let them kind of walk us through.
You want to pull up that funny looking picture of the two of us? That would be, that would be great. There we go. And we do have, I think we have a dozen slides. We have about five probably run closer to 10 minutes. So, if you're, if you can't see it or you want to get more comfortable, get more comfortable. And feel free to do that at any moment. We can, we're going to run through the slides, but if you guys have any quick questions and you just want to make sure you've seen things right or you don't understand, just ask the question.
Stop us.
Yeah, just stop us. Again, Mark Aragoni, I'm a landscape architect. I'm also a senior principal with SLR. With me tonight is?
I'm Kevin Fusiler, I'm a principal landscape architect and I'm the lead in the athletic facilities design group.
Yeah, so Kevin's going to take pretty much the lead in the details, explaining to you what we've done. I'm going to scroll down to that next slide. But what we thought it would be good to show you is, we were under contract somewhere above the end of 2023. We really got rolling as the weather broke and we started to get outside. But some things that have been completed, a full new survey of the area of the high school track and field, wetlands delineation surrounding that field area. Soil sampling has been done, testing of the existing soils out there. You know, whenever you're considering whether it be a synthetic turf track or even a natural grass field, we have to understand how much topsoil we have out there, what we're going to do with it if we don't need all that topsoil, and what's the makeup of that topsoil. That's been completed. Geotechnical analysis is being completed this week. Tanbrook, I'm sure everybody's aware of the Tanbrook, go ahead.
What's in the geotechnical analysis?
I can take that.
Go ahead.
So the geo, what's different from soil sampling, which is test pits and taking hand augers to understand content and depth of topsoil, geotechnical investigation is more for structural purposes. So there's going to be two investigations going on this week. One is going to be taking corings of the existing track, where a core is taken out so we can understand the profile of the base, the asphalt, and then what's underneath it, the types of gravel and materials. And that lets us know potential for reuse on the asphalt. It lets us know if that asphalt's met its lifespan, can handle construction activity or would disintegrate under heavy loads. So that's very important for the track. The other part of that investigation is if we go with a new lighting system. Each pole location for a new light pole, we need to bore down about at least 20 feet to understand what's down there because the structural load, we don't want lights tipping over ever. So we're going to do that in two locations. As Doug had mentioned, we have two orientations that we're looking at. The existing, more or less, and then a north-south. So we're going to do that, all three of those over the, starting tomorrow through the next three days.
Are those the only bore holes or were there bore holes from the previous studies?
I don't believe any geotechnical investigation happened under the previous consultants.
So you're going to drill big holes in the middle of the?
They're not big, they're very little and at the end it just looks like a little disturbed earth at the top.
Okay.
The track cores go right back into place. And we adhere them with the construction adhesive. And if anything ever happens, we'll come back and repair those. But the bores in the field, they don't leave any, anything behind.
I thought I saw a map of various Xs across the whole field structure.
That might have been the soil sampling, which is more widespread.
Okay.
I forget the total number of soil samples we took, but it was well over 20.
Okay.
And those were just little hand augers, again.
Okay.
The, like, Ziploc bags of soil goes off to the lab and they tell us what it's made up of.
So our fields are not in the best of condition, I guess. My question is?
Well, I wouldn't say that.
Are they any worse off for the bore holes than before, or the soil samples?
Uh, no.
Okay.
We're not going to, no.
That's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Short answer, no.
Thank you.
We wouldn't do anything invasive at this point. We are actually going to do some test pits once the season's over.
Okay.
That's where we're just trying to understand depth of groundwater and get a little deeper. But we didn't want to disrupt any of the spring sports season.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything that you'll see, we're going to wait until after the season. And that's really where we would take some sod up, dig a hole a little bit deeper, rubber track backhoe, because we're trying to understand how the ground infiltrates. And really, the only way to do that is dig a hole, look at it in a couple of strategic locations. We don't want to have that affect any of the spring high school sports. So that still has to be done. Ongoing analysis of the Tanbrook culvert, that's part of the project, it runs underneath the field. We need to understand that a little bit more, that's ongoing. And then phase two, Kevin's going to talk a little bit about where we are, what we've accomplished. And then at the end, I'll come back in, talk a little bit more about schedule and maybe get you guys meeting on a Saturday and Sunday, because I think that's the only day you guys don't meet. Listen to the medicals.
We hope, we hope to change that.
So what we're looking at right now is those previously prepared concepts by other consultants. We're doing a sanity check on, does the layout work, does it make sense? And then also, you know, those last costs were done, were created in 2022. We know a lot has changed since then. There's been lots of inflation, escalation. Some of it's leveled out, some of it's still going up. Can't really say anything has gone back to pre-2022 levels, but that's what we were tasked with doing. So the next few slides, we're going to show you what we were saying is option one scenario. That's basically what can we do with your existing track in the existing footprint that it's currently in. And that would involve in a minimum, a new running track. We would rejuvenate the existing grass field, we wouldn't rip it up and replace the whole thing. And it really is our most economical option that we're looking at at the moment. Option two is holding that same footprint, but we're going to rebuild this whole facility. We're going to change, there's a lot of different shaped ovals out there. So we're going to look at a more common shape track that we're seeing, which follows international world athletics configuration. And then, which also increases the field size inside. And that would involve more than just a rejuvenation of the field. That would be pulling up the soils, amending them, or potentially going synthetic turf. And then option three is going to a north-south orientation, which is preferred for sports, just because of solar aspect. Again, that would be that more, more common, newer configuration of the track, which has the increased multipurpose field size within. And under all these scenarios, we're looking at six-lane versus eight-lane track, grass versus synthetic, and then what else can be done outside just the track and field? So this is just one slide for option one. Again, that's keeping the existing configuration. So that would either be a new six-lane track in this existing shape, or we would add two lanes to it, to make it an eight-lane track. And when I say add two lanes, again, there's a lot of ways to skin this. It could be two lanes to just the sprint section, it could be two lanes all the way around the oval, it could be a combination of the two. We're going to, we're looking at retrofitting the existing light poles with LED technology or potentially doing an entirely new system. You have a six-pole configuration out there, you really only need a four-pole. The poles get taller though, more fixtures, so there's a lot of cost comparison there. But LED, in our opinion, and pretty much anyone, that's the future of athletic field lighting, all lighting. Gives you a lot of flexibility, instant off-on, dimmability, multiple lighting levels. We can do fancy light packages, which we don't ever really encourage, but there's a lot you can do with it. Under any scenario, we're going to be looking at ADA accessibility, making sure that there's pathways to the facilities, all of them, not just the track, not just the field, the jumping events, the throwing events, making sure that they're all ADA accessible. Any new project, that's always a component of it. I mentioned the grass field, do we rejuvenate it, do we replace it, do we go to synthetic turf? This option one, with all those variables, right now we have it range from $1,550,000 to $3,060,000. We are carrying escalation and inflation for assuming next summer construction. We're using costing from previous projects bid last year and this year. So we feel comfortable on the pricing. When compared to previous numbers, we're higher, but it seems reasonably higher to us. We don't seem like we were somewhere really detached from those original concepts and we're missing something. So there's a lot of options within that, so we'll see a breakdown coming up in a little bit. But we have option 1A, 1B, 1C, and there's probably DEF, you know, we could keep going. But at some point, we want to move this project forward. Next slide?
I think Jennifer has a quick.
Oh, sorry.
Does rejuvenate have a technical definition in this context?
So typically, when we've done a rejuvenation, that would involve, you know, rototilling of the field, grinding up the grass and the soils there, blending them, that actually puts organics back in the soil from the grass blades. We've done amendments of sand. But again, we're kind of just working from the surface, we're not scooping all the material out, piling it up, blending it with organics and other materials to bring parasity, to get, you know, permeability of the soils in there. So it's, it's not the simplest thing we could do, but it's been proven effective.
Does any of that involve drainage?
So that field has significant subsurface drainage. Under the rejuvenation, we wouldn't really be impacting that. Under any scenario, there's an edge drain around the field and you have to look closely because it's very overgrown. So it's probably not as effective as it should be. So when we say reconstruct the track, there would be a new track edge drain. The subsurface drainage under the field, we wouldn't touch under rejuvenation, but by increasing the parasity of the soil, we're allowing the water to get to that system, which may or may not be effectively doing it this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So option two is that construct an entirely new facility. This is a fat track, an Olympic standard configuration. It gives you the wider playing surface, it allows for, really when I say wider playing surface, a larger soccer field. That's the biggest footprint you have out there, everything else can fit within a soccer field. And this, again, would be completely new grass field here, we would address the drainage. One thing we didn't mention is, in our explorations, we have discovered very high groundwater table. And we, not even for the field, we want to address that, for the track, for the longevity of the track, we're going to add under drains under any scenario to help manage that water and increase the longevity of that track that we put back. I think also, looking at the Tanbrook assessment, so far we've camered it, looked at it, and structurally it's great. Cover wise, there's only, in some areas, about two feet above it, so protection of the Tanbrook. But also, outletting a little more of these subsurface drainage into it in strategic points might help that groundwater.
Yeah, so the number that's been circulating is six inches.
We haven't, but we didn't dig up every spot, but two feet was the shallowest we found.
To groundwater, to the water table?
Oh, to the water table, about a foot.
Okay.
Yeah, and it has been a wet season.
Yeah.
So that, the test pits that are the remainder of our investigation, I think it's going to tell a lot. I think we're going to find a hardpan layer in there where this water's perching. Because looking at the Tanbrook, there's a lot of room in there to take volume. It's, the water's not flowing through there fast. And when the groundwater's sitting above that, something's holding it in place. So.
And that's, that's pretty typical, we've seen it in other areas around here. We just are finishing up a very interesting project in Long Meadow. All natural grass fields called Wolf Swamp. Cold Wolf Swamp, you can imagine probably what it was before it was a field. We had nothing to do with that. But they, again, there's wetlands right off the site. But the subsoils underneath the topsoil, it didn't add up that the water wasn't getting there. Well, what we ended up doing is finding there was an impervious layer of a dense, compacted material that we punched through in strategic locations. The water's now getting into the soils underneath.
And do you think those?
Are these like clarifying questions?
Sorry.
Or, I mean, I think we all have really good questions, but we should let them get through their presentation and then we can pepper away.
Just, just, just use the term that wasn't impervious layer, what was it for that?
Um.
You said compacted.
Yeah, heavily compact, silty, yeah.
Okay, impervious layer.
I hesitated to say clay because that's a...
Okay, okay. Impervious, that's fine, that's fine, thank you.
So under option two, it's looking at a same configuration but completely new facility. All the improvements I mentioned under option one. But because everything we're looking at under this is new and full depth reconstruction, the cost range jumps significantly from option one to two. So now we're at 4.5 million to almost 5.4 million. And then last is option three, and this is rotating it to a preferred north-south orientation. Everything new, removal of all the old. And the cost jump isn't that much higher between two and three, because again, we're just taking all the components and rotating them. And a couple minor things, but we're looking at 4.6 to 5.5 million dollars. So all in all, I forget the first low number, but 1.4 to 5.5, depending on which route we go. I won't go into much detail, let you read this on your own, but this breaks down the scenarios that we looked at, the three option configurations. Most of the elements are listed in there. And then there's an asterisk comparing it to some of the previous Weston-Sampson. So you can be like, okay, well, they were here on this one and the similar option from SLR is this cost. But there, you know, I think it ranged from about 500,000 to a million dollar difference depending on the option.
Where's the asterisk?
It's like on the dollars.
So on the cost, there's a footnotes.
Yeah.
It's very tiny for this.
Oh, I see it, yeah, 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 this one.
There is an asterisk though, and that just reflects that, our costs include our design fee, inflation costs, a big contingency at this point, because we're really only at schematic design.
Yeah.
So all those are taken into account.
Okay.
So depending on the funding amount that we're authorized to proceed with, we will look at what option that best fits. We'll start developing that, but we always design with alternates in consideration, whether they're bid adds, add alternates, or de-dox during bid. So depending on how pricing comes in when this goes out to bid, we can take out non-critical components, see if we want to put infrastructure in, so at a later date, they can easily be added to the project. And these are just some of the items, the type of track surfacing, the LED system, scoreboards, ball safety netting, irrigation with natural grass, and spectator seating too. And there's probably twice as many options.
Which all leads us to the project schedule. We always like to work backwards, right? I mean, you think we want to go to construction in 2025, when school gets out, everybody's contractor's ready to go, which then is, we start to look at that schedule going backwards, which then really says, wow, you, you need to be bidding this project. For contractors, their most aggressive time to bid is in the fall prior to that next year. And that's fall of 2024, which means we really need to get guidance from you all, from the towns, from the school boards, to say, this is the direction we want to go, so that we can then say, listen, we just told you, we're getting close to having all of our investigation done. The next big thing is going to be, which way do we want, or what type of materials do you want to do? Kevin, just that last slide, there are certain elements of this project that we can look at and fine tune the cost. But we really need to understand, okay, what is the budget that we want to design to? And I think you are close to getting there and giving that guidance. But I think what we wanted to just show you is, we're doing our due diligence, we're doing our homework, we're doing our investigations. We're to that point when we start to look at the schedule. We need to start making progress in the design so we can get through permitting and we can get bid documents together. And then we can have some fun and pick some of the elements to say, hey, we need to shave another hundred thousand dollars off. What do you, what do you think of this, if we do the ball netting later on? That's where we are. So if there are any questions, we'd be happy to field them.
All right. Keep them up for a second, Sarah, you can start.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious about ADA requirements. I'm familiar with how that works in buildings. If you're going to, you know, if the cost of your renovations is more than 30% or whatever, you have to do ADA. And I want to make these, this facility, whatever it is, ADA compliant. But is there a similar requirement, like? I don't know what, how it would be.
I always go by the rule, if there's, especially if it's state or federal funding, then usually it's about 20% of the project budget.
Of the value of the project?
Of the value of the project. So as a landscape architect, I always thought of just trying to make everything universally accessible. But if it comes down to someone holding your hand to the fire, then I would just go by the... Um, but if it comes down to someone holding your hand to the fire, then I would just go by the 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 federal ADA law that. You know, twenty percent should should go for many projects to ADA improvements.
Thank you.
So I have, I guess a two-part question, the first one is just about that, as you're testing the soil. Are you testing that soil at all for PFAS or preliminary items? Because my understanding is you would need that testing ahead of time to prove that you weren't responsible for any contamination that happened afterwards. And what I saw last week is the EPA now put PFAS in the super fund category, so I know we don't want to get into that kind of fiscal responsibility. And so if you could answer that, and then I heard y'all talking about Westfield this, we came in. And I thought that was really interesting, because Westfield isn't like a town known like Amherst is for its environmental activism. But they decided to go with a third option, and I wondered if you could share a little bit about their decision process and that, or why, you know, why they went that way.
Sure, well, let.
Yeah, I'll start with the the PFAS, because ever since eighteen years I've been designing athletic fields, it first was crumb rubber. And then it was, you know, it was lead and turf and then crumb rubber carcinogenics and and contaminants and. We've, we've always stayed in front of the science and and the studying of that and done our due diligence to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of our clients. Um, and now it's PFAS, um, and it's been two years of non-stop talk about PFAS, so. Uh, we tested the soils here for not only pesticides and heavy metals, we tested for PFAS. Um, we are going through projects now and it seems to be the trend in any project moving forward, and these are primarily converting grass to synthetic turf where it's coming up. Um, we've now have protocols in our specs where. Uh, whatever materials are gonna be supplied for the project has to be pre-tested for PFAS and show us that. But that's great, once those materials are ordered and made for this project, our client sends a third-party lab to the factory. So the material can't get cross-contaminated, takes random samples and tests it, and until those tests show non-detex. Uh, we're testing for forty PFAS compounds, and what the federal, uh, decided to do is. In five years, they're gonna implement for drinking water, there's five major PFAS, PFOS compounds they're looking at. And a few cross combinations, they're gonna make that a standard for drinking water. So we're going above and beyond, we're following a California model, testing for forty types. And I'm happy to say the two projects so far, two or three, that we've done that on have all come back non-detected on it. You know, it's, it's, it's what we can do at this point, it's ever-evolving, ever-changing, um, and, you know. We think we're, it's a good process to follow at this time.
Just really quick on that piece, does the high water table then interfere with that considering that we've got. You know, like conservation area and everything right close by, and you said the water's already high and I know it's really wet back there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not an environmental scientist on that part, so I I don't have that answer, but it now I have that question to ask the people who should know that answer. Um, one thing Martin mentioned before, SLR was acquired a few years ago. We were Mylona McBroom, a regional firm, and then SLR, this global company, um, acquired us and. We have PFAS experts all around the world that I'm learning more about PFAS, PFOS from, and, uh. It's definitely a big issue out there.
And then I guess just to touch on Westfield, um, Westfield went through a feasibility study. My, we probably looked at four or five different areas in town for synthetic turf fields, um, that's what the focus of their study was. Um, we then advanced three fields to a twenty-five percent design level. Um, in order to narrow down on costs, the more design detail you have, the more you can narrow down on costs. Um, and then through, let's see, through town council, I believe they most recently, they're moving forward with the project. But they are adding, um, natural grass fields as an option. So similar to some of the items of the fields that we looked at for you, we looked at a synthetic turf option and also a natural grass option. The three fields that are advancing, um, to a certain extent will be looked at, natural grass as well as synthetic. To a point in which they'll have to make the call on whether they put bid documents out for synthetic or natural grass. Um, my gut tells me it'll probably go to fifty percent, um, design level or sixty percent design level, maybe that permitting level. Um, and keep the project moving and then they'll give us feedback, um, right now. Um, we've told them we're gonna follow the same process that Kevin just described to you, as far as our bid documents and our specifications call for that. Various levels of testing if the project is a synthetic turf field, um, to. Keep the regulated PFAS out of the project, and that's all we can do as far as the science goes. Um, the little update, in Westfield, obviously, historically has went through a drinking water, um, contamination problem with PFAS in their drinking water. So they're a little sensitive to it.
I have so many questions, so I don't know if I should just limit myself to a couple or one or something. So, um, I think you started to address this, but. Um, with just the rejuvenating of the field, you will also do a drainage. A component to it, you said of all the options, there will be this drainage.
Oh, so there's a track edge drain, there's a channel drain that runs around.
Also something underneath and you're just trying to get it to reach it.
Yeah, so there's two systems out there going on right now, there's a series of perforated pipe below the topsoil level out there. We, without digging into it, we don't know exactly, no, but it's six inch round perforated pipe. Uh, we surveyed catch basins that are at the surface and we see these pipes going out everywhere, and depending on what aerial imagery you look at. Um, you can sometimes see those, because if the water's getting through them quicker quicker, it's not saturating that root zone as much. So you can see the lines of the under drains, so we know they're out there. Um, to the full extent, we don't know, uh, there isn't available mapping. Uh, but there is a channel drain that runs around the entire perimeter, interior perimeter, and it's very overgrown. Um, to the full extent, I don't even know, but it just makes a lot of sense with any rebuilding of the track. That gets reconstructed, because that's there to just take runoff from the surface of the track. You'd want the field to be its own entity, whether it's synthetic or natural grass, and you want the track to be its own entity, so two watersheds almost.
So. It's, it doesn't seem like you've completed a bunch of tests yet, and they're like the biggest pieces of information are yet to come. But I'm kind of wondering, either do you know or when will you know? Um, from the results of these tests, what additional potential cost implications they'll have like? If you hit granite in the, in the bedrock, if you hit, you know, if if the topsoil is made up of one. Component or versus another component, or whether you find something horrible in your tan brook survey, or if you, you know, like.
I think we do, we do know a lot of it from our investigation at this point, we just have a couple pieces left. That we're making some, some broad assumptions based on what we're seeing from the other semi-quasi-related areas. Um, and that's also, I mentioned the twenty percent contingency we're carrying at this point. Um, previous consultants in their initial phases only carried ten, I would never do that. Yeah, that's, uh, you know, sometimes we're actually almost bidding at ten percent contingency. We'd like to be more at five by the time we're out to bid, um, but we definitely at a schematic conceptual level, twenty. Uh, gives us a lot of comfort in that if we hit granite, uh, you know, for a light pole.
So just to, just to follow up on that one, I would say we're, we're about seventy-five, eighty percent complete with our analysis. The test pits that I talked about, we're gonna wait to do till after the season, that's gonna give us a little more understanding of how the field drains now. Which I think is important, we want to understand that a little bit more, the geotechnical is really gonna inform the light pole foundations. Um, and the track, uh, base material, other than that, we've, we're, we're ready to roll, um, as with some direction. I I think the twenty percent contingency, um, putting the escalating factors in our numbers, I think we can, our numbers can handle. A little bit of variation from what we find in that last twenty, twenty-five percent of our investigation. Um, so again, I think this was the right time for us to come and say, hey, we found some. I don't think we found anything that was, um, earth-shattering at this moment. But, but it's, we're here looking for, hey, we're gonna need a little direction in order to keep going, um, at some point.
I have one quick question and one other, so, um, the. There's irrigation planned for the grass fields, but not for the turf fields, and so. Is there a different kind of mechanism that we'll have to use to cool the turf fields? Or how are the turf fields gonna be cooled in the heat?
So with turf, the whole, another couple hour discussion is types of infill. Um, there's a lot of options out there from the traditional ground-up tire to all types of organics, to different types of polymers. Um, and we've had experience with almost all of them, um, we have never had a client in New England. Um, water their field for cooling, and we've, we've designed quite a few, uh, fields, it's why we've, we've had some put in the infrastructure. And never use it, um, the only fields that we have irrigated are, uh, international level field hockey fields, and that's not for heat. It's for speed, speed and play, uh, which is quite something to see, uh, but that's not applicable here. Um, we do always provide hose attachments and that's more for cleaning, spot treatment in case something happens on the field. Um, so that's always the irrigation component we include, there, um, so when the heat question comes into play. Um, if it's too hot to play, if it's ninety degrees or higher in the summer. Protocols need to be put in play by, uh, the athletic director, the coaches, that that number of hours of use have to be. Short segments with breaks in between and hydration, um, it's not the field that's gonna get you. The plastic, in the, in the infills, there are in different infills, natural ones that are cooler, that. The problem, you're dealing with a lot of plastic fibers in those, the grass blades, and those reflect a lot of heat. So, you know, we've done studies back in the day that when the sun's out, yeah, these fields are gonna be considerably hotter than the grass field next to it. Cloud cover comes over, that heat immediately drops, so, you know, spraying something on the field to try to cool it. It, it really, um, the experiences we've seen, it creates humidity, so it takes one not great situation to.
Makes it worse.
A different, not great situation, um, so again, when it comes to the heat questions that we typically get, it's. You know, sometimes it may be too hot to play on synthetic turf, it's probably too hot to play on natural grass for extended periods of time. But again, we, we've designed a hundred, hundred fields, let's say, and one or two that put into irrigation systems have never. Never seen them used.
So that kind of begs the question, like, which type of turf field did you use in your cost estimates?
We used an alternate, we did not use a crumb rubber field, uh, so we used an alternate which would be either a, uh. You know, a, a virgin polymer rubber, plastic, uh, infill. Uh, to a organic material, a sand or an organic, uh, like, there's the corknut out there. There's a, a new, uh, southern yellow pine derived infill that's getting a lot of attention, um, so that is what we carried in our budget. And because you don't have the resiliency of a rubber particle, you also put a shock pad under the field, which is a foam underlayment, and that, um. Basically, you don't need infill to play on it, because any impacts to that is gonna be dissipated in those pads. And it guarantees the hardness of that field never exceeds, never gets close to industry standards.
The, uh, wetland assessment, did it show any problems with the areas?
The only wetland is where the culvert daylight's on the north end of the campus, and, um. And it really just puts us in a regulatory review area if we go with option three.
Okay, um, for option three, the orientation north-south, there's numerous other playing. Areas around the current track. For different other sports. How would those be accommodated if we rotate the?
Well, so the area of the old, the existing track would be restored to a level grass playing area. Um, how the school decides to stripe it would be up to them for.
Well, I guess my question is, does it geometrically fit, because it's, if you. Three, it seems to eat into three other playing areas, and then the, I think what's the JV soccer field on top?
Yeah.
That's basically useless, the ones on the left would need to be rotated, but I don't even see two surfaces fitting there.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, again, these were developed based off, uh, the last consultant's configurations. And they actually showed a new grass softball field in the lower left-hand corner, um, but did not show. Consideration for the other fields now, the two fields in the northwest where your cursor is and above, those appear, by the way, they're striped just to be practice fields. Because they're, they're not of any size or shape that lead to a competition field. But I do know that, you know, that that field at the very top, uh, does appear to be a regulation-sized field and. Uh, I know we got called last week, we put a, a boring location marker in there and said, you know, we have to take that out, which.
Yeah, but people don't need to practice too.
Yeah, understood.
So on page eight, the, the comparison, so it seems that A, B, C, D for two and A, B, C, D for three are basically the same. With the only difference being the rotation, right? The difference between, the cost difference between two A and three A, two B and three B. Ranges anywhere from ten thousand dollars to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, why are the differences, why are the differences different?
There's a good, that's a good question, uh, well, we have detailed breakdowns of this and now, after running through so many different numbers, um, it starts to get a little blurred. Um, just my recollection is, um, so.
So let's take the gra- like, take C, two C to two, three C is ten thousand dollars difference, right, four, seven nine ninety versus four eight.
Yeah, so, you know, under the north-south, uh, uh, orientation, there's less, um, walkway work, um, so less concrete.
That's not the question, hold on, so the, take two C versus three C. So it, all the, the surfaces are the same, it's an eight-lane track, whatever, the difference is ten thousand dollars because of the orientation, right? But if I take two B versus three B, the difference is a hundred fifty thousand, even though it's the same.
The only difference is orientation.
The only difference is orientation, so one type case, the orientation cost me ten thousand dollars more, and the other case, the orientation cost me a hundred fifty thousand more.
Without looking at the breakdown, there might have been something a little off in those numbers, again, that's why I focus more on the range than actually. I, I don't have that breakdown in front of me, so I'm not exactly sure, right?
Can we see those breakdowns, like, is that something you can share with us, like the, the numbers, the, the line items that went into these, that went into these?
Yeah.
That'd be great, um, and, and you've given us your contact info in this presentation, so can we contact you with questions after tonight? Or is this like the only time we get to talk to SLR?
Totally up to you. Yeah, I don't mind, I enjoy talking about this stuff.
You don't know who we are, no.
I had another question that has escaped me, so come back to me. Oh, I got it. Sorry, um, oh, okay, so I'm hearing you say that you need or would like guidance from us as to like what option. We are leaning towards or want to go with, um, and I think an important thing, I think an important thing for us to know as a committee. Is the maintenance required, like, if we did decide to go with an artificial turf field, it would need to be replaced in ten years. And there would be disposal costs and then replacement costs, like, do we get that estimate from you guys? Or is that, like, I think that's gonna be an important part of the input for our decision-making, so like, where would that information come from?
Yeah, we definitely can provide it, some information on that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, natural grass, you know, the maintenance on natural grass can vary greatly, uh, synthetic turf's pretty straightforward. But, and you can nail it with the replacement costs, um, with natural grass, really depends on what level of, uh, commitment you're gonna make to it. Um, as Mark mentioned, Wolf Swamp, um, they put a big investment on a big natural grass complex. And how many years did it take for them to even use it?
It was a full year and a half growing period, and what they decided to do was they put the full maintenance out to contract. So they don't, they don't have DPW, they don't have parking wrecks, they put the maintenance of those ten, eleven acres out to bid every year, they know exactly what the budget is. It's a competitive bid process, it includes their fertilization process, their maintenance, um, replacement of gold mouth sod. They, they put it out to bid, that's how they handled it.
But they're, they're monitoring the fields on a weekly basis with a con- an agronomist consultant that works with SLR. And, uh, it's really one of the first natural grass municipal facilities where I've seen, you know, this, this extra effort. To make sure that this brand-new pristine facility stays that way for many years to come, because with natural grass, sometimes we see. Oh, yeah, we're, we're gonna take care of it, and then a year or two later, it's worn out again, and it's a living organism, you gotta treat it delicately.
I'm so sorry, I don't remember your name.
Miguel.
Miguel, perfect, all right, sorry, thank you.
Um, so acknowledging that a lot of the project alternates haven't been decided yet, um, what is, uh, ballpark variability? Between, across a preliminary option, op- or? Between, across the preliminary option, op- or, yeah, the preliminary options. Um, and in your experience with clients, how has, um, like interference with athletics? Like, where do you put the athletes while the construction is going on?
Well, but, yeah, we, we try to construct these facilities of municipalities during the summer break. Um, you know, depending on the, the complexity of the project, a track facility can take up to four months to build. And we know that summer break isn't four months long, so we uh, we really try to, to, try to figure out how early. We can break ground or the contractors can break ground. Uh, and we wanna get a, get them out there as early as possible, but sometimes we're up against. School graduation being held on the field and we can't disrupt that, so the contractors can't mobilize until mid-July. Uh, late June, um, and then, you know, we then beg the athletic directors to come up with contingency pla- contingency plans. For the fall sports season, you know, schedule your first games away, um, have some backups around town for practice facilities. So we, we work during the, throughout the design process to really, you know, develop the best possible scenario. But, you know, we're up against rain, weather, um, and uh, just knowing that, you know, some material supply chain issues the past couple of years. Um, things can get delayed, so we just have to do the best we can. You know, we know field time is valuable.
Uh, Earth?
I would like to get down to this project schedule, uh, because that schedule says that we have to make some decisions. Uh, by late May. All right, we're in May, coming in this week. We, we, in terms of the meetings we have scheduled, uh, we are under the gun to make some decisions. We can't kick this can down the road any further. So, I would like to us to. Focus upon the project schedule, uh, and the option selection needed by late May. The first one was site investigation, test pits, after conclusion of the spring twenty twenty-four sports season. I guess what I'm asking the committee to, to consider is where we, where, the numbers of meetings we have left. Before late May, and late May does not mean the end of May, it means before the end of May. So, the question is, when are we going to schedule a meeting so we can give? Some direction, and that cannot be, this, we can't, we can't delay any further. This is it. So, I'm asking the question, when are we gonna put this on the agenda so we can make a decision?
I think we can talk about that at agenda planning. Yep.
Just, uh, you know, currently you have scheduled the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth of May, and the twenty-seventh, which is Monday, is Memorial Day. Just as far as a frame of currently scheduled meetings, not the.
Let me ask you a question. What do you mean by late May?
Well, we need to advance preliminary design so we can start the permitting process. And we know that the permitting process here is gonna involve quite a few meetings and, and commissions. Um, and, you know, we set late May as an ideal time to hit that, to start preliminary design. Hone in on one of these options, start developing, developing it to a seventy-five, eighty percent design level so we can submit those applications. Um, and so we just, as Mark mentioned, we worked backwards from a construction start of June twenty twenty-five. Through the bidding window, through the final design, through the permitting, and that, at this point, that put us at late May.
And late May, me- meaning before the end of May, or, or by the end of?
If, if you, if you were to give us a, hey, we wanna switch it ninety degrees and we want synthetic turf and here's our budget, our range, our budget range. Um, on June one, I don't even know what day of the week that is, but you guys work seven days a week anyway, so, um, that would work. If you said, geez, we're not gonna get you an answer by second week of June, that's gonna be, that's gonna start to be a problem. Just getting things in, so.
Uh, yes, uh, given uh the financial finances that we've just seen, we have some challenges.
Dad? So you referenced the Weston Sampson analysis, which obviously the cost estimates. Are gone. Which parts of this report do you feel are relevant to the work that you presented? What, and I go back and say, this makes sense for this. There's, I mean, there's lots of parts. There's an introduction, there's outreach, demand analysis. That's the part I'm most interested in. Usage?
Yeah, well, the, we, we took all that as, we know Weston, they know their work, they know what to do.
Okay.
A good competitor of ours. Um, so we, we took that at face value.
Right.
And then, you know, we assume those three scenarios, plus all the configurations that go with it, where any one of those would work.
Yep.
You know, obviously, the north-south orientation and, you know, the ideal configurations, if they fit your budget.
Yeah.
That's what the direction we expect to go, but we have no issue with doing the, what we call the economical option. Um, you know, because it, it will work.
So in particular, I mean, the north, south, east, west question has to do with. Whether or not we can afford it.
That, and I, I did hear master plan, future considerations for the school campus.
Right, but I, I guess the questions I'm asking are the, uh, the part where they compare advantages and disadvantages. Synthetic field and natural turf, and you feel like that part is still.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Sarah?
Um, would it be possible for you to, uh, on these three layouts? Um, show, show field layouts, the, the other playing field, like, like what can be accommodated? Presumably in option one, e- even if two lanes are added, that probably doesn't change the layouts at all. But I think it would be, I would like to see, and do we end up, you know, do we end up losing? Significant space if, if we can get to option three. Um, so, so I would be interested in seeing those, seeing the fields light up. Um, and then my other question is about the uh track edge drain. Well, it's more about, it's more about the drainage. Does that connect to the system that's?
Yes. Yeah, there's, there's.
Goes to, okay.
You can't see it from the surface, but spaced equally around the field are track inline catch basins. Where it drops down and a, a round pipe connects into a larger pipe system.
And do those need to be cleaned, or do we know how well they're working, and the same goes for the perforated pipe under the field?
Um, so they do need uh maintenance from time to time. Those catch basins usually should have a, a trash bucket in them. So leave litter and other debris will get in them, uh, and then you take those, you take the cover off, you take the basket out and dump it out. Um, we haven't fully investigated those at this point, we can, but the assumption under all our scenarios right now is. It's gonna get replaced.
But the, but even if the grass field is rejuvenated, you're not touching the drainage system underneath. And I wonder if those perforated pu- do the holes fill up with dirt and gravel and just?
So that last investigation of test pits, we're gonna do a series within the field and we should get a good idea of.
You will go down to the pipe?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
They're not that far deep. They're, they're only a couple of feet deep.
We will not uncover all of the fingers of drainage. What we'll do is we'll find a few of them, check out their condition, we'll have to make a general assumption. Um, it's not something that you're gonna track all of them. I think we're gonna get a pretty good idea, um, how they were installed, if they were installed correctly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then it should work, and the issue may be over compaction in the top layer.
It's not getting, water's not getting.
Getting to that system, but if we open them up, we find one of them and there was no filter fabric and the stone is all sedimented in. Well, then we have a little bit of a problem that we have to look at. Geez, I think we have to replace the under drainage, which is why we have some ranges in there. Um, we also, the rejuvenation, um, reverse tine tilling that, you know, eight inches of the top soil is one option. Um, there's also other options. Um, you can deep tine aerate it, you can top dress it with sand and organics. Those are all things that if you come back and say, you know, we're really leaning toward, you know, fix the track, give us an extra lane. Rejuvenate the field, that's gonna help us focus on, okay, let's figure out what the best approach is based upon what we understand. If you come back and say, geez, we looked at the, we looked at the, um, previous study, we understand the benefit of, you know. No matter if we build a really nice natural grass field, you're gonna have limitations of twenty hours a week of use on that field. As opposed to if you go synthetic turf, you can play on it in the rain, after the rain, and there's no limit on play unless it's a hundred degrees outside, right? So those are all those sort of questions that we're gonna, we're trying to get some answers back, but to your point on the, on the study and the hours of usage. By all means, use the Weston Sampson.
Uh, Timmy?
So I shared Earth's concern about the schedule. Um, I, I think one of the comments we've heard previously was that this really needs to get done. And, you know, we're disadvantaging our athletes by not having a, um, a field available. So, um, Doug, could you remind me what money we need to have in hand in order to be able to go out for bidding?
So, um, generally speaking, you know, you can't go for, you can't sign a contract unless you have resources to, to cover the contract. So of course, you know, we have to have some, pretty close to the neighborhood of what we're, we're thinking the bid's gonna be. I mean, it, you know, the bids are what they are. And so sometimes, you know, and we've had this happen in, in other projects where, you know, we put stuff out to bid and, and realized we didn't have nearly the resource. Um, I did attach a memo to this that talks about the available funds and I, I'll bring that up now, actually, if that's all right.
That, that's perfect, because I wanna point out to the, the bottom three rows of that and the bullets that you have there. That's an excellent, excellent summary, because based on that information, we have practically nothing to decide.
Right.
The only two options that we can possibly, possibly do are one A and one B. In which case I would vote for one B because it's a better track. There's nothing else we can do. We cannot go, at least I can't go to my town and ask for more money, we just, you know, had a major budget crisis. And I'm not gonna wait for another year or two years until we maybe have more money and disadvantage our athletes anymore. So, I think we're, in my mind, we're done.
Yep.
One B.
I have your name down there. William?
I was just gonna say, is there, I, I see we have on all the ones, they don't address any of the drainage issues, correct?
The track edge drain is addressed.
Okay.
And, um, without it in front of me, I think, do all of them say rejuvenate?
Well, one would be, um, install synthetic turf.
That, so that would take care of the drainage. Um, so yeah.
So you would have to readdress the drainage if you did synthetic turf on top?
That's where I was saying there could be a one D, one E, one F.
So could we do a grass, instead of rejuvenation, reconstruct the grass?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
On that one B, one C?
Yeah, and we can, we can work out that scenario.
Uh, Dan?
Um, just to make sure I understood correctly, so built into these numbers is the possibility of having to reconstruct that drainage?
So what I was saying is that we currently don't have a number for one that has the, all those underground, dr- underground pipes addressed.
Okay.
But we can work out that number pretty easily and come up with a one D.
Okay.
Be thankful we don't have a ten percent contingency, twenty percent.
We'll, we'll need that one D, I think, and. You said possibly the reason that we are having drainage problems is the compacting of that top layer. So there, whoever put in the system prior put in drainage and it either drained adequately or didn't. But there wasn't any addressing our, oh, wait, 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 what's it called? The impervious layer issue.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna learn a little bit more with the test pit program that we're gonna get out there and do once we're off, once everybody's off the field. But any natural grass field, if it, and this tip, this is very typical. You are not different than a lot of other New England communities and municipalities where if you don't have a maintenance protocol. Where you're deep tine aerating and you're putting sand down on your natural grass fields every year. That field, it's, it's going to naturally compact. So you could have the best under drainage system, which we may find out. You had a great under drainage system put in. If you consistently use a natural grass field. And don't do a routine maintenance, um, that can consist of a whole bunch of things, like I said, that deep tine aeration, that overdressing of s- of sand. To fill up those holes, um, addressing uh weak spots in the, in the turf, resting the field appropriately.
Using it after heavy rains.
Those are all things that, it's, it's naturally what happens to a natural grass field. Now, what we can do is we're gonna give you recommendations on routine maintenance. I mean, these are things that are real.
Yeah.
And I think it's the way that we're going.
Yeah.
Um, in this industry is, if you're gonna go natural grass, great, but you gotta maintain it.
And we did when, uh, approaching the RFP for this project, we did put our agronomist on our team. But we haven't utilized him yet, cause we just don't know what direction we're going. We're not gonna utilize him if you say we're doing synthetic turf, we don't need him.
Okay.
But we definitely have him on call for this.
Thank you.
Earth?
So Doug. Where are we at here? You know, I look at this number, the one B, it's uh one point seven something. Do we have that much money on hand at this moment in time?
We do. Um, we have a, we have, behind you on the screen there, but you can't see that unless you flip your head backwards, but. But yeah, so, so there are a number of different sources we have, some of which have restrictions about, um. Uh, how they can be spent or what project that, that they were sort of targeting with that. And I think that, you know, some of that may have been in the same vein as what the school committee did originally when they did the data authorization. So one of the reasons they did the data authorization the way they did was to sort of focus uh into a particular. Uh, design or certain characteristics of design to help the fundraising. I think that was also parallel with some of these. So the, the restrictions that exist are on, um, uh, the free cash that the town of Amherst did. Uh, the larger amount of community preservation funds that the town of Amherst did, those are the two main ones. Um, if those two authorizations could be modified, um, there's another one million seven hundred thousand that would be available. Um, I can check with the, you know, with the, with the, uh, with the town as to, you know, the likelihood and the timeliness of their ability to make that switch. Because if you have, you know, if we have all the possible money that's been talked about for this project, we're just shy of three and a half million. Um, that's a very different place and a different, you know, things that you start to look at there. But a- as far as, you know, unrestricted money we can spend right now, it's one point seven seven. And, y- you know, if we can, uh, ask the town of Amherst to make a couple of alterations to their currently appropriated. To take some of the restrictions off, we can go up to three point four-ish.
The, the, uh, question is, when I look back at that project schedule and things that we have to get. June, first week of June, these people have to know something.
Right.
They don't know it, so, so in, in your mind, do you think that we or the town? Would be able to re- remove those district, restrictions, uh, during their regular meeting process, town council process?
I can, I'm a, I have to say.
We know they meet once a week.
Yeah, I mean, I pose a question to the, the president, see if she thinks that'd be something they'd be, you know, willing and able to take up and, and whether or not they could have that debate and, and. In that timeframe, cause they basically, you know, would have to make that decision in the next couple of meetings. They're gonna be talking a lot about budget over the next couple of meetings, so this isn't gonna be outside of what they're talking about. So I think we sort of pose a question whether they, they'd be willing to entertain that on their agenda and, and we can get an answer about whether they would or wouldn't or could or couldn't. And then, you know, I think then there's really sort of two avenues of, of choice at that point. So there's one with the money that we, this unrestricted we have now, which is one point seven seven, that's one set of choices that we tell these guys. And then if the town of Amherst, you know, is able to in the next few weeks to say, yeah, we can free up that cash and not put those restrictions on, then you've got almost three and a half million. So I think you're kinda thinking the, those two tiers, and then, and then the answer is really whether Amherst makes the changes.
Now, you know, you know, being realistic, we know that the political implications of those restrictions. And what brought them about. So realistically, I, I, I guess, in my mind. What we have to work is, is at one point seven, that, that the other stuff is like, you know. Given the, the political politics of it, i- it might be pure fantasy on the part. And it, and, and, and we have to get some decisions quickly, within our meeting schedule. And in the town meeting. So, uh, if I look at end of May, uh, just, you know, end of May, giving. Uh. Some feedback to how we want to do, what we want to do, that's a really tight timeline, really tight. And then to say, well, we're gonna think about, we're gonna, not gonna think. And then to say, well, we're gonna think about, we're gonna, not gonna think about, we're gonna ask the town to remove the restrictions, that even makes it even more tighter in terms of this. So anyway, we're, we're doing a dance on the tight, tightrope, tightrope. And I, I think that we're getting ready to fall off.
Can I ask you guys actually a quick construction question? So if we give you a direction, one B, right, and then we can have some alternates. So if at, you know, a few weeks later, we're like, hey, we have an extra million dollars. What can we, right, like, but we can add those in. So if we can have like more seating or something else, so we can use the funds we have, even if they come through later available as alternates, because you can have those until you bid, right?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that you wouldn't be able to really come back with is, alright, you're a couple of weeks into detailed design, now change the orientation.
No, no, I'm not asking about, I'm not asking about that.
That could open a.
Yeah, then, no, 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 I, I, I mean, like, the base project is designed, right? Like, fine, we're having a east-west eight lane track with a grass field in the middle. But now we find out we have some more money to work with. Okay, instead of just, you know, loosely redoing the grass a little bit, we wanna like scrape the whole thing and put a whole bunch of new grass.
That's not a problem.
That's an alternate we can add if we have money that comes available to us after. And that doesn't have to be decided until bids.
Right.
Well, no, that would have to be decided before permitting. So we would.
Before permitting?
So we would be taking June to develop our permit drawings. So we'd be racing forward to advance our drawings to a permit level. So they're not construction, construction bid documents, but all the details are in there.
Yep.
Um, that would be something that, uh, we would have to understand, number one. If you're rotating it, great, then we know we gotta, most likely it's gonna trigger a, a concert, a concom. Um, if you keep it, um, where it is, potentially we have a little bit more time.
Okay.
To make that choice, but those are the big things. Keep it where it is, whether it's eight lane or six lane, let us know. If you're gonna flip it, um, that's something we need to know.
Right.
I saw you, you went the first week of June already.
Oh, yeah. Right, I mean, it's, you know.
Stretching the timeline, it's.
I mean, you know, you, everyone, anyone who's been in construction and doing bits and, and we gotta do permitting and I'm thinking, wait a minute, you know, we, we, I've already said it, we gotta get to a decision point.
Uh, Sarah?
I thought it was Bridget. I don't think I have a question.
You didn't have your hand up? Alright.
Maybe I was pointing to Bridget because she's.
I have Tilman and then Bridget and Deb and then Anna.
Okay, I didn't think I had a question.
So, um.
Point of order, can I just ask that when there's a line, people get back on the end of the line if they have extensive questions?
I will continue making my list as fast as I can. Tilman?
So Doug, you, you made a good point that there's possibility to remove restrictions of them on the funds that were committed with, with, with restrictions. I don't see any way that we could get any additional funds within the timelines that we're talking. That's my opinion. I don't think that the towns would go for additional, that's my hypothesis, so let, let's say it this way. Assuming that, that hypothesis plays out, we can eliminate all options that are more expensive than three point four million.
Yep.
Because we couldn't afford them, which basically eliminates every single north-south option. So the discussion that we should have, in my opinion, is one A, B, C, and then variance on D plus alternates as, as Sarah Beth mentioned. Um, and there basically the big question is, is the grass, is it synthetic turf? The synthetic turf would only be possible if there was a removal of the restrictions on the funds, um, because that is also outside our scope. So in, I think it would be best if we as a committee move forward with discussing variance on option one and just give up on two, two and three, because it's simply not possible.
If we want.
Bridget?
Um, I, I think two things, I think as a committee.
Yep.
We're, working, we're looking for a lot of funds now to run our schools. We've got a bigger question of some of the roofs and other big capital projects that sadly are, are like really top, top of mind when classrooms are being shut down and students being moved. So I very much, you know, want to see the best track that we can all go to and cheer on our teams, but, but I'm worried that that's, um, you know, that, the asking more of the towns at this time is gonna put us in a very bad position, not just now with this year's budget, but again in next year's budget, knowing the shortfall we face. And then I just wanted to make a correction to the table up there about the Community Preservation Act funds. Because under the law for that, um, you cannot use it, use CPA funds for artificial turf. That's the twenty twenty-one. And so Sarah and I had had this debate the last time we had the meeting, so I went back to the minutes. And in the minutes, there's the question, can there be qual, quality, clarity provided regarding the exact, what exactly this committee will be funding? It would not be for the turf field. The CPA portion could go towards the track and any association expenses other than the turf field. It says in the minutes, so that, it can't be restricted that way. It could be restricted north-south for sure, and if we can't afford that, we can't, so, yeah.
It was, yeah.
Uh.
Do you have an answer?
Just to, to that point, so, so I may have implied something with what I wrote that, that I wasn't intending to. It's, of course not, so CPA itself doesn't allow you to build a stadium either. So we can't buy stadium seating with it. So it's, it's within allowable uses. What the intention was, my understanding, the intention of CPA's restriction was to identify a particular, uh, approach, again, for sort of, you know, the purposes of, of supporting a, a, a more singular vision and therefore to potentially help the fundraising external to this. The actual use of dollars, yeah, it's gonna have to be on design, it's gonna be, um, you know, dirt work or earthwork in and around the facility. It can be used for the ADA stuff, it can be used for a number of things, but, but it can't be used for the, the field itself. And I, I think that's even inclusive of grass. Um, I could be more, more mistaken there, but there's some, some limitations on sort of like you can't do a stadium with CPA funds.
I just wanted to say, because right there it says with a synthetic.
Right, again, again, my, my sense of that was the intention of the CPA when they voted was not that they were funding a synthetic surface, but they were funding a project that had synthetic surface, which is different. And it's a subtlety and, and so it's, you know, and again, it wasn't that they necessarily, again, sort of a unified approach to what the debt authorization was from the school committee was aligning with that, that approach to have both, uh, parallel as far as the broader project and.
I guess I'm just not sure, we have to go back, even though we're changing to something because of the north-south, right?
Right, right, it's more about changing the north-south is an option or not, is, is more probably critical.
That, so, I'm with Tilman. I would like to get this underway. I don't know if this is a question, but I wanna give them the best track we can and just punt on the whole grass field thing. That's my feeling, that if there's a way of using the funds that we have and its orientation, sorry, has to be east-west, can we get a really nice track out of our one point seven or two, three point four million dollars? Better than just sprucing up the track that we have? That's number one. Number two, if we go to the upper limit on that, the three point four million, we need to do it quickly, as everyone said. And I am sure town council is going to want us to cost out the maintenance schedule recommenda, recommendations. If we just punt on the track, it, the field, then it doesn't really matter. We can just keep letting kids break their ankles. I don't actually say that, I know I'm, I know I'm on TV and I really regret that, let me retract that. But that is the consequences of punting on the field entirely. So I guess I would say we would have to rejuvenate, okay, so.
Can I ask a clarification?
Yes.
What do you mean by punt?
Yeah, what do you mean?
Just focus on the track.
No, but, but when, when you say we punt on the field, because all the projects include changes to the field of some sort, that's why I'm confused.
So can we get a better track and do nothing with the interior field? We don't, it has to. No, better track than one A, B and C.
What's wrong with B?
I, I, because I like the way it looks like it's a better track, the new six lane track or the eight lane track.
Two additional lanes.
But then, then you're into two.
Well, that's what I'm asking, can we do two without doing anything in the interior?
Alright.
No.
I think what happens when you go to the, and, and we may wanna call in Mr. Zomek here from the town to, to help us well, but I think the thing that happens when you go to the option two is because you do such, uh, significant earthwork underneath the track, so you take the existing track off, underneath it's a basically a big lap of, of blacktop, that all comes out. Because of that extensive work, you have to, you have to rework the interior field pretty significantly because of that level of earthwork, which is part of why the, it's a, it's more of a rebuild of the field there.
They're, they're, they're linked together.
Yeah.
Okay, so then back to the town. I, um, if we need to turn this around as a committee relatively quickly, we need to know those maintenance costs. And even if it's zero, we need to know what the other towns are willing to commit to that maintenance. And then possibly Amherst would be willing to do, to release the, possibly, I'm just guessing, the nine hundred thousand dollars without the reorientation. That's all I got to say.
Anna?
So I'm gonna assume that you've worked with Amherst Concom before?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so you know what you're getting into when you get, I don't think we're gonna have to worry about that because I think that's, it's just a completely unaffordable option at this point. But, um, um, I guess that question might have been answered already, but if we did do a little bit of a rebuild of the interior field, but did not, but left it grass and did build the eight track, eight lane track, can you do an estimate for?
Yeah, that's gonna be our one D.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna, and I was telling you, from what I'm hearing, one D is gonna work with the budget that we're hearing and will get you a, my, well, obviously a brand new track facility and a better than rejuvenated field.
Isn't that one C?
No.
One C.
Artificial turf. Turf.
Oh.
So one way you could think about it, just off the top of my head, we, we take the turf component out of that and you have a whole new drainage system on the field. If you were to replace the turf system and some of that drainage with topsoil and sod and irrigation improvements, you're, you're probably coming in under that one C number, so.
So isn't that one B then?
No, it's one plus.
It's, no.
One D plus.
We're gonna call it one D, but if we cut it one D. This is what happened when we turned, when we turned three concepts into eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Uh, Jennifer?
Are, are we as a committee saying one C is hypothetically feasible? Or are we saying one C is probably, is not feasible? And then I have something to say after that, but.
With the current restriction, one C is not feasible.
And we're not sure we could get there in a month.
Okay, um, I have a, I have a recommendation or suggestion of how to move forward, but I, which I, which could go to future agenda planning, but we should probably just talk about it now?
Um, we have two more people on the list and then can we come back to your?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, perfect. Tilman?
I have a question about the reconstructed track on the existing layout with eight lanes. That will be very nice, right? But it's not IAAF compliant because it's too small, right?
Yeah, it would, the, the big restriction is the width of the soccer field that you're gonna be able to stripe inside.
Right, okay. But it will be brand new track and that's good. Um, so I, I think in terms of guidance, we should have one option, one request should be to design something for exactly one million seven hundred seventy-three thousand, whatever. No, I mean, you, you said you can design to predict a number and I think that should be.
We don't mind that.
That should be one of the numbers we ask for. We can then, as a secondary option, less likely to be feasible, take a number that's larger because we may be able to unrestrict some of the funds. I just wanna say if we think that, uh, since we, we're not gonna go to north-south ever.
Yep.
And if we think that eight lane, eight nice lanes and a decent grass field is good enough, we should stop there. We don't have to blow the budget and go over this. If we can do something well for a reasonable amount of money, we should show that we can do that. And we're not always the committee that's asking for more money from the towns.
Uh, William?
I was just gonna, I mean, I've only been on the committee this year, so I wasn't here during the previous conversations. Is this gonna make students happy, I would think would be one question? Um, and then quickly, Doug, do you think there's any way that we could expand the number beyond what you projected?
Answering the second question first, um, I was just looking at this today just a little bit. There, you know, we do have a capital stabilization fund, we have a small amount of money in that. Um, I think there is, what I don't know off the top of my head is whether it was restricted when it was put in or if it was just put in for the purpose of stabilization. That's gonna be on the order of a couple hundred thousand, maybe three hundred thousand, um, which again, you know, is probably better for contingencies we don't plan on or, or we get, uh, to an alternate kind of thing.
Orientation.
It's not north-south orientation, no. Um, uh, you know, at this point, given that we haven't had a home track meet since twenty eighteen, I think, you know, any facility better than the current facility? Um, you know, i- anything will be an improvement, um, and will be, you know, really, uh, beneficial to our student athletes. You know, we, we wanna build the thing that, that, uh, is the best within the money we have. And again, I think to, to Tilman's voice, we, we don't wanna be paying for things that don't really add a lot of value for us at the same time either. So it's like, you know, we could put, you know, marble gateposts or something, you know, which wouldn't really be money well spent. Um, you know, but, but at the same time, you know, I think an eight lane track, you know, if we can, if, 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 if the interior field could be made a little bigger, I think that makes a regulation field, that's a better facility. But again, you know, it's, it's, there's some tricky choices here and the, the difficulty is, you know, so the sort of, between option one and option two, there's a pretty significant bump up in cost to get that nice, that next level of, of, of upgrade in facility. So that's the, the conundrum, to be perfectly honest. But I think, you know, any, anything we do will be a pretty significant upgrade for our athletes and I think also for our spectators. You know, we're, we're not ADA compliant right now, it's really difficult for anybody with mobility issues to get there. And this is a public facility that gets used by, you know, members of the community as well. Um, and so to have more members of the community be able to, to, you know, utilize this, uh, will be a real benefit to, to the community. Which is part of why I think Amherst has kicked in as much as they have, because they recognize, you know, proximity matters and a lot of talent, you know. I don't think a lot of people are driving in from Shute, Prayer, Levitt or Palom to use the track. There might be some, but, you know, Amherst, there's people that live, you know, blocks away that might come over and walk a few laps in the summer or, or if they've got, you know, mobility issues, they may still be able to kind of, you know, make some, some efforts there and use that facility. And that's the intent is to have a, a community, uh, facility that everybody can, can get some benefit from, so.
Sarah?
I wanna be sure that any version of one, um, well, with a adding, adding lanes, that this is going to be a track that, where we can have meets. I mean, it will be, it's designed, even if it's not a fat track or whatever, you know, all that stuff, it's still gonna meet MIAA or whatever.
Yes.
We're not gonna buy something and then, oh, oops.
Yeah.
It's still not.
We wouldn't design that for you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, the only, it, it's the soccer field in the middle that doesn't comply with regulations, that's the only piece.
Not saying it doesn't comply, um, it just, you know, when you, you, you stripe the field and, but without my CAD computer in front of me, I can't tell you exact width, I'm guessing that field's striped to one ninety-five width, which is perfectly fine. Um, typically in state, their regional matches, they like a little larger, more NCAA conforming, which is two-ten. So we're only talking about fifteen feet, but a little change in that radius bend makes the track fatter and shorter and it allows you to fit that field. Then we also wanna think about s- safety overrun areas, so have enough room for a player to run off and not run into the track or.
Right.
An obstruction, is what we call it.
So, so can I ask just a follow-up on that? So the one B slash plus D, whatever, that is, that would include the extra fifteen feet or no?
It doesn't include the extra fifteen feet, it keeps your same. It doesn't include the extra 15 feet. It keeps your same field, the same size it is now.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But that's regulation, in my opinion, for all sports.
The, the other thing I'll say, just talking about the, the current track as it exists now. If the surface wasn't in bad shape, we would have home track meets. It's, it's not, you know, it, it's still a perfectly viable, even with the smaller field interior, that, that, you know, sort of construct as it is now, even if it were six lanes, is, is perfectly fine for, for, for meets. You know, eight lanes gives you more options and, you know.
Eight lanes is for efficiency of the track meet.
Right.
Right.
Doug?
My personal preference would be east-west, six lanes. Use whatever, right? Because we can still have track. We can, we can still have track meets. And use whatever remaining money is available, go all the way up to the top to improve the safety of the interior field in whatever shape or form that's gonna be. And I think that by necessity is gonna be some sort of reconstructing rejuvenation. And if you, if throwing the extra money at it doesn't do it, then add the extra two lanes. So, six lanes, like optimized safety, two lanes, whatever you can do at the 1.7 and 3.4 level.
Jennifer?
Oh, I was just gonna ask if we could call on Dave Zomack, who keeps raising his hand.
I'm so sorry.
Please.
Sure. You have good information for us?
You gotta bring up a chair, though.
Smuggle in.
That's right.
Hello, good evening. Dave Zomack, I'm the assistant town manager and have been involved in this project for a number of years. I'll try to be brief. I, I fully understand where you are, where the town is, where the region is with regard to budgets. We are all in this together. However, I did just wanna bring a little, I'm not sure how many of you were here over the last seven to eight years that we've been talking about this project. And I want to bring in some of the voices of the students, the coaches, the community members. So, I, I've heard track so many times tonight, I'm a little emotional here, trying to calm down. This has gotta be about the track and the field. You know, 50/50, it's gotta be a level playing field and track, if you will. What we heard in this room were dozens of coaches, dozens of students talking about the condition of the track. And I know it's been closed to meets for a number of years, but that field in the middle is substandard. It has been called dangerous. We have had many injuries there. We must do the maximum we can in that field. We also heard from a lot of athletes, track and coaches, that eight-lane was a must. So, I just wanna remind you all, I believe, many of us believe, eight-lane is a must. So, what I've heard, and, and I, I like what, what you said about designing or, or saying the, the minimum we're gonna do is 1.7, I would advocate what Dr. Slaughter talked about moments ago, which is going back to the CPA and to the council and asking about those other funds. I, I know, I believe Sarah was the chair of CPA at that time. We have a new CPA chair and some new members there, but I think the community deserves the option or the, the, to hear this presentation during the month of May to go back and, and go to the town and say, are we willing to kick in those funds to get something better? I hear you on the north-south orientation. I hear you on turf. But if we were to get the east-west orientation with an eight-lane track with the absolute best field we can have in the middle, natural, natural grass, I think that would be the way to go. Because we've also heard from these gentlemen who are very, very experienced, is we're gonna have to maintain that. And my worry is, we're going to kind of supervalue engineer, if you will, that, the middle of that track. And then somebody's gonna have to maintain something that may be hard to maintain. So, I'm just, I'm not saying go with a, none of this is a Ferrari. Let's be honest. We, we don't have that kind of funding. But an east-west orientation with an eight-lane track with the absolute best interior field we can, we can afford. So, I'm just advocating to go back to the town. If, if Dr. Slaughter was willing to talk to the president of the council, we could see if the chair of the CPA, they, they don't need this time of year, but they could easily call a meeting.
They would, and they would have to. They have to first approve.
Make a recommendation to the council.
Yeah.
So, that's all. I, I just think, give us a little time. I'd be willing to work on it with, with Dr. Slaughter and our consultants and Bob Parant behind me. So, and I think that's the best position we can be in. You know your minimum or you know your number, 1.7 and change, but maybe we can get a little more to make the best interior field for our athletes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tillman?
So, I completely agree, and I'm glad we're talking about the, the east-west orientation because the main point I was trying to make is that two or three are simply not possible. And the 1.7 is kind of the, the lower end, and I completely agree that we should make it as, as good as we can afford. In that context, the rejuvenation, the way you described the rototilling of the field of some sort, sorry. Does that address the safety concerns? I mean, it's, it sounds to me that the safety concerns are that the field is uneven.
Yeah, that, that would restore plenary and fix any divots, pull out any rocks, large rocks and material like that from where we've done this in past projects. But would it sounding like if, if, when we work this new option with, not the synthetic turf, but a fully reconstructed, engineered drainage and root zone for natural grass, that we're gonna be under the 3,60,000 that we show now? I'm not sure how much at this point.
Right.
But that sounds like that would be your best option.
And, and so that would be the, the, the really nice grass?
Really nice grass. We, we would pull out the old drainage system. We'd replace it with a new, modern one. Unless we do find in test pits that it's in spectacular working condition. But we may as well, if we're gonna go that deep, we're gonna pull everything out. We're, this is now, we're gonna stockpile that soil. We're gonna blend a lot of sand into it, a lot of amendments. And then we're gonna put that back down. We're gonna sod the field. So, that's one thing in the old estimates that put seed. You seed a field, you can't play on it for at least one season. We advise two. So, we're talking sod, which means after about two weeks of growth, it's ready for play. So, it would be a high performance. Now, constructing a grass field, we can design them as expensive as synthetic turf fields, but, you know. Then we're back to square one.
I, I just wanna say, I am in full support of eight tracks, not six.
All right, so this is a process question. We know if we put this on another agenda, it's another week, two weeks for RSC. When's the next RSC meeting?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth. So, uh, so my, my question is, is it possible to make a decision tonight in relationship to, um, 1A, 1B, 1C? So that we can then have, be able to give Doug, or whoever, the marching orders to get together with whoever in, whoever there is in town. So, that can get on their agenda, so we can know as fast as possible how much money we really are gonna end up with. So, it's a process question. Do we wish to make that vote tonight?
All right. Yep, go ahead.
So, I'll, I'll offer the following, you know, appreciate the discussion about this. And, and I think that, you know, I don't think you have to make a decision tonight. I think just the general direction I'm hearing is, you know, we'd love to have more than 1.77 million. So, I'm gonna literally tomorrow, you know, call both the, the, the council president and, and the chair of the CPA and see if we can get this on and get this moving. Because if they can, the quicker they can, you know, for the council, if they can put it on an agenda and make a vote, fantastic. And, and if the CPA can meet, uh, you know, we can just sort of see what those timelines are and whether we can, you know, kind of meet the frame that, that we need in order to make decisions that these guys can then go with, let us start making phone calls tomorrow.
Those are, we, we have one more meeting in May. We have two more meetings in May.
Fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
Fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. And the, so, at least we could make a decision on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Given your, that sits. All right, good enough.
Jennifer?
Okay, good lead-in to my suggestions, which is that we, my, so, so we have, we have May fourteenth and May twenty-eighth. So, my suggestion is that we put this on the both agendas. The May fourteenth would just be a discussion with robust public comment perhaps, like we would make. Because we, we wanna get input from the community. We said we would get input from the community. So, we're not, but, so deliberation, discussion on May fourteenth. And then May twenty-eighth, we would deliberate more and decide. And that gives Doug the month of May to talk to the town council and CPA, Amherst CPA. The town council's meeting, May sixth and May twentieth. Their May sixth meeting is already full. Their agenda may already be full. So, their next meeting would be May twentieth, if the CPA can meet before then. Like, there's, there's like lots of pieces in place. So, that's my suggestion. Deliberate, May fourteenth with lots of public comment, and then decide on May twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Fitz?
Oh, my gosh. Can I?
I can pass it. I, my question's answered, I think.
Okay. Uh, Deb?
Where does this presentation, as Mr. Zomack suggested, we provide to the town council? Where does that fit into Jennifer's? Right? Isn't that what you're saying? Give, give town council the opportunity to see the choices in front of us by looking at the full presentation? No?
Well, again, I would defer to Dr. Slaughter if he can work with the president of the council and see if this could be added to one of their agendas. And then, of course, if the CPA could call a special meeting to discuss their earlier votes of a year or so ago to see if they would reconsider. I think there was the north-south orientation issue. And then the, they actually, I believe, said their, the funding was for artificial turf, if I'm not mistaken.
We were presented with a specific request. So, that's.
That was the vote. So, that one could be, if the CPA recommended that, they could remove that. If you, they could take another vote that wouldn't restrict the money to only a, an artificial turf field. So, that's what we're suggesting.
Only in north-south.
Yeah.
It's the north-south we wanted.
Oh, the north-south, I'm sorry.
So, just a follow-up then.
Yep.
I thought there was a recommendation to make, give them the full range of information that we have just processed. Maybe I misunderstood.
Sure, we could provide them with this, with this presentation.
That, that, that's where I'm asking. Where on the town council does this presentation go? Or do you just provide the slides?
I think, well, I think the, the way I would approach is, that's, that's a determination that the council president would make as to whether that's useful or if something slightly different would be more helpful. Or we can kind of divine that with, with, with the, with the president of the council as to how best to approach them.
Because the only opportunity we have is May twentieth, if that were relevant. Okay, thank you.
Sarah?
Sarah or me? I think it's me. Sarah and I have matching hands. I was just wondering if, what I'm hearing is close to a consensus from us is that we want 1B or 1D, well, and that those would be the options. School, I don't want school committee to advocate our process to the town of Amherst's process. I want us to make a decision and then reach out to them for funds to get to what we want, right? Because I think that, that we, we own this decision in the end, and we also know what our fiscal limitations are. I'm, I'm, I'm not happy about them. No one is, but, but we can't pretend they're different. So, like, if we could have some sort of estimate and presentation that showed 1B and 1D, so we could say, we're going to do 1B, but with your support, we could do 1D and really make the field great. I think that would be a terrific way to move forward.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I, I agree that the, the, I don't, the decision is ours, not the town council. So, I don't know that they necessarily, we can give them this information, but that, 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 I don't think they necessarily need all, all of this detail. Lost my train of thought. Um, oh, just my, I, I meant to say as part of my recommendation that if we meet again on, if this is on our agenda, gonna on May fourteenth, that gives SLR time to come back to us with all of the questions and, and follow-up that we've asked of them. But if it could come even sooner, then, then we would be able to have that information for the town council.
I think our marching orders would be, make sure 1B, anything we have to do to adjust 1B to make sure it's right within that wheelhouse of that 1.7777. And then develop that 1B plus or 1D. I think we'll call it 1D. Refine those. So, you have two to say, and I love the story that you told somebody over here. This is what we can do for what we have that's non-restricted. This is what we'd like to do. And Doug can explain, this is what we have to change in order to make that happen. So, we can commit to, to getting you those, you know, I'm not gonna say a time because he's gonna kill me soon. First week of June.
If we could actually just have them before our next meeting would be really important on the fourteenth. That would be great.
Not a problem.
McGowan.
So, I'd just like to give my two cents on the six-lane versus eight-lane track. So, I've ran varsity track for four years, and obviously, that's meant my entire high school career not having a home meet here. And to be quite frank, it's a little humiliating as a school, especially because our track and that sports facility out there is so closely tied to our identity, at least for athletes. I feel like, like, at least track runners, we spend so much, so much of our time on the track. And like, not having those home meets, I'm aware of everything you guys are faced with, all the restraints and stuff. But if, if we're putting all, if we're putting in all this effort to do this, I think that we'd be remiss if we didn't go, or at least say that we tried to go all the way for eight lanes. Just as somebody who hasn't had a home meet in four years.
So, 1B does add, is the eight-lane.
Yeah, so.
Awesome. All right. Any further? Thank you both all for coming and staying and being peppered with all of our questions. And we really appreciate all of the hard work you've already put into this.
Lot of progress. This was a lot of progress, and it's kind of what we needed to, to get out of it, you know. So, thank you.
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
Again, worst-case scenario, we get eight lanes.
Outstanding.
No, that's 1B. 1B has eight lanes.
Yes. I, I take a five-minute recess, and then we'll be back at 9:05. Nine oh five, we are back in session. So our first category, next up item is the superintendent evaluation, because we're going to have to do some things very quickly, not very quickly, but, you know, quicker rather, sooner rather than later. So we have a subcommittee for the superintendent evaluation, which is William, Anna, and Earth. And their charge is to develop the evaluation guidelines, the instrument and the timeline. And so, my memory is that previous committees had worked with Sasha, Sasha to create that timeline, so, I mean, not, not the timeline, the, the instrument. And so, I would recommend maybe reaching out to Deb, maybe she has it.
We can get it.
Okay, perfect. So I was, the, for the proposed timeline, I was looking at the calendar and looking at where our meetings are, so I came up with the proposed timeline, not to hijack your charges or take, commandeer any of it, but, so, for five fourteen, that meeting, to review and vote on the superintendent evaluation instrument for the region, Amherst and Pelham will have to have their own votes, uh, for, at their meetings, and then, six eleven, to have the superintendent present the artifacts document, which historically has been a joint meeting between Amherst, Pelham, and the region, so the superintendent is making one presentation. Uh, and then, I, I think it was like roughly a, a week for the committees to evaluate all of the artifacts document and complete the, the evaluation, and then, once they're complete, they come to the chairs, and the chairs take them and create a summary report, which then gets presented at, at a public meeting. Our public meeting, I think, would probably be six twenty-five to review and approve the superintendent evaluations, just because we are running out of days in the calendar. So that is my proposal, I wanted to just kind of circle back, so we had time to talk about this. Um, yeah, questions? Jennifer?
All right, I'm gonna be a little bit of a rebel, and suggest that maybe we could just not do a complete superintendent evaluation as we've done in the past. Because what would we do with it? What would we do with the results? And, I, I, I don't mean like, we should just drop, I, I, I don't think Desi's gonna be asking us why, I don't think there's any state consequence for, for not doing it. Maybe we just still ask Doug to prepare a summary of the ways that he met the goals, we, we listen, we take it in, and, and we give feedback, and, but maybe we don't do the survey and the presentation of artifacts and the, and the report, like, maybe we just don't. That's my idea.
If I could.
Yep.
So just, so there are standards, so we do have to report ratings on the standards, you're not compelled to provide narrative about why those are what they are. So we, we do, for all administrators in the district, we, and, and all educators in the district, we, we provide ratings on the standards and then an overall rating. All the narrative that goes with the evaluation process is really feedback for, for, you know, the individual, I think, and I said this earlier in the year, it's like, yes, I will take that and, and use that, and it's also, you know, sort of advice and information for the new superintendent, so I think it's to, to whatever extent, it makes sense to do that.
I, I think my remembering of filling out the reports, if it's anything other than meets expectation, you have to provide reason why, but I don't know if that was just our evaluation tool, or Desi rule, maybe the subcommittee can look into that. Um, Sarah?
Yeah, a couple things, I, I spent a long time on Desi's website trying to find out if it was required of a interim superintendent, and of course, it might be in Doug's contract that he's getting one, I don't know. And I couldn't find anything, and I left a message and nobody's called me back, so maybe, if there's still any thought about whether the process can be trimmed or anything, the subcommittee can pursue that. But I just wanted to say that, because I was already thinking about this, I went, I tried to find the final goals that y'all passed, and I, they're not attached to any meeting that I can find. I found draft goals, so I would, the sooner, the sooner somebody can find out what those goals are, and certainly for the Amherst School Committee, obviously, we need to know what they are to get started.
Tillman, and then?
I like the idea of simplicity, but, and, we should ask Doug if he maybe got so excited about being superintendent that he wants to apply somewhere else, and he needs that report to show how well he did, I don't know, maybe he wants to show this to someone. Also, I want to avoid a narrative that there's processes that we apply to everybody in the district, but hey, the superintendent gets away without going through the same process. So if you can avoid those issues, I'm okay with simplicity, but otherwise, we'll just do it the way it's supposed to be.
Earth?
I, you know, I, I certainly agree with Jennifer, in terms of whether it really is necessary. Second, I had, had a similar thought to Tillman in terms of Doug. Is this valuation going to be something that is, that would be useful for you? That's the question. And if it's useful for you, you find it to be useful, then we should do it. Otherwise.
If I may?
Yep.
So it, it would be useful to me, however, I also understand the time constraint and the effort it takes to put one of these together, I've worked on a variety of boards that have done these kinds of evaluations, and they, they take a fair amount of time and effort by the members to, to be thoughtful and write those up, so, you know, I'm happy with whatever you choose to give me, I will, you know, use and, and, you know, value that, that, that input to me, because I think it'll reflect on, you know, the work as a superintendent, but just also just generally as an administrator and a leader in the district, and so that's really valuable to me regardless of what role I have moving forward, so, I'd say that. But I also, you know, if, if the, if you want to take a more abbreviated approach just because of, there's a few things to do in the next couple of months, and you want to focus your efforts on some other things that, a bit more than this, that's, that's perfectly fine by me, I think it's, any and all feedback's helpful and useful, and, and I think, again, you know, where you may want to spend a little more is just, is this, you know, it's instructive to me as, as a, as an employee, but also I think it's, like I said before, is sort of informative for the new superintendent too, I think that's, that's a frame that can be really helpful for them as well, to understand, you know, what's important to you, what, what things need work. But it doesn't have to be a twenty-seven page, you know, from each of you kind of thing, it can be, you know, paragraph or two can be plenty a lot of times to explain the circumstance, so, you know, it can, you can take a less is more approach, in my opinion.
I like the less.
Anything else? Deb?
I haven't been through this process before, but I understand there's a fair amount of work that the superintendent has to put together, so if we're streamlining our process, we should equally streamline that part of it as well.
Yeah, well, I have fewer goals than, in past years, so that'll, that'll be a little less material that would be, you know, compiled for you guys to begin with, I think that'll be, be helpful. And, you know, and, being sort of, when it was those were voted, and being an interim year, the ability to sort of be deeply enmeshed in all those is not as great, so there just isn't going to be as much. So for, for, for me to sort of compile that, work with staff to sort of bring those things together, it won't be too onerous, I don't think, in that regard. I'm just recalling Sarah's question about the, the goals, I think what, if you find the last agenda that it was on, even though they say draft, they're the last one, I don't think they altered from that point, I don't think, so.
There was only four.
Yeah.
But I'll double-check and share them out.
There were only four around there.
Well, it took many meetings, sorry, I mean, it took a lot of school committee meetings to work out those goals, so, just wanted to be sure we know what the final product was.
Yep. Okay, so, in the order of keeping our meeting moving along?
Point of order?
Yeah.
Two and a half hours has passed.
Oh, we're so close.
It's now nine thirteen, four, nine twenty-six.
Sarah?
I moved to extend the meeting by fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Sorry, another point of order, just, just, I know that we do fifteen minutes, but the rules say it's thirty minutes, and it's exactly thirty minutes, and, you know, then we, we don't have to choose a number, right?
Then I amend my motion. I move to extend the meeting by thirty minutes, maximum.
Sir, a second?
Here, no second, you go ahead.
I will second it.
Oh.
All in favor of extending our meeting by no more than thirty minutes? Or, what did you say, thirty minutes maximum?
Yes.
Uh, one, two, three, four, oh.
Really?
All those opposed to extending our meeting?
No, Earth.
No, I didn't.
You got your hands up.
Three, four.
I'm from Chicago.
And, of those who abstained? So it doesn't pass, so it fails, so we are adjourned.
Did that ever, has that ever happened before?
Yes.
Yep.
I thought this is history, anyway. There I am, wrong.